Hello, everyone. Welcome to our Women Who Changed Westford podcast, where we will be interviewing women who have served on the Select Board over the course of Westford's history. We are Capstone students from Westford Academy, working with the Westford Museum and Historical Society to put together this program in collaboration with the Westford Cat. Today, we will be chatting with Valerie Romell and Deanie Healy Coffin. Mrs. Romell served nine years on the Select Board, and Mrs. Healy's coffin served 12 years on the Select Board. Thank you for joining us today.
Happy to be here.
Ditto.
I'm Alita, by the way.
And my name is Gaethry.
How do you say it again?
Gaethry.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we just wanted to start off with the question, what made you interested in politics?
I guess I'll go first.
Sure.
So, I grew up in this town, and my father was on the Selectman, my brother was on the Selectman, and my mother was involved in everything. I mean, she was PTO presidents. So, I learned at a very young age to watch my parents, just, you know, whatever was needed, they would pitch in. And that's what got me interested. I did also, politics is in my blood. I still love it. And I've been involved up in Kennybunkport, where I live now. But that's really how I got into it. It was my mother and father.
Okay. And my interest in politics? Well, when I moved to Westford, everyone was very friendly, friendlier than a lot of towns in Massachusetts. And of course, I started volunteering for my church. And a neighbor introduced me to the League of Women Voters. So, I got involved in politics on the periphery. In other words, getting people to vote and things like that. And one of the assignments I had was to be an observer. In other words, physically go to the meetings and write a report about what was going on. And at the time, there was an issue that I was, I knew how to solve, and I was watching the board dance around it. And the opportunity came up to run, and I said, "I can help." And so, I did.
What was it that was it?
The Perchlorate.
Oh, the Perchlorate, yeah. Valerie, you championed that. Westford citizens have a lot to thank you for.
We're still paying for it.
I know. But it's healthier.
And just jumping off what you just said, what inspired both of you to run for the Select Board in particular?
What inspired me? Well, I have to say, I sort of got hoodwinked into running. I went to a meeting at Sam and Carol Frank's house. They're both, they have both passed away. And Emily Tuller was there. And unbeknownst to me, I think they had a pow-wow about, you know, who was gonna ask me if I would run. And they did. And my first reaction was, no, I'm not gonna run. And then, after we talked about it for a while, and Emily is very persuasive. I don't know if you know her or not, but she's fabulous. But she was very persuasive. And Sam Frank is a very, was a very low-key, but gentle man. And so, I left there that day, and I ran. So, they're really the force that got me to say. I had also done, I had also been on the Personnel Board, and I had also been very involved in all my kids when they were younger. I ran, they built two playgrounds at the Frost School and Cameron School. I did, Susan Flint and I did fundraising. And so, and then I became President of the PTO. And so, it was a natural transition for me. But I just hadn't really thought about doing it. But that's how I ended up kind of working my way through it.
And Mrs. Romell, you mentioned the Perchlorate issue. Was there anything else that drew you to the Select Board?
There was no one particular person that influenced the decision to run. I just saw the need, and I really didn't know what I was getting myself into.
Nobody does.
So, when we had the League of Women Voters, the, what is that?
The League of, when they ask all the questions? The Candidates Night?
Candidates Night, yeah. So, I'm sitting there, and I flubbed my opening, no big deal. But sitting in front of me were two people that just stared at me. And all I could think of is, oh, my gosh, what am I doing here? But, you know, I won. Not by much, but.
And you ran with me, right?
With you, yes.
And I think Hal Schreiber was, was he the other person?
Bob Shaffer?
Oh, Bob Shaffer. I think it was Bob Shaffer and Hal Schreiber. And I think Hal lost that year. But I can't, I might be misspeaking, so I don't know.
What was it like running your campaigns? Did the League of Women Voters support you and like other women?
Well, you know, it was interesting. I was friends with some of the people at the League of Women Voters. But Emily, Marilyn Frank, you know, my sister Tootie. So, and then there were, you know, fine people that did financing, people that did signs. And there were a lot of, you know, you had to go to the Lowell Sun and be interviewed by them. And, you know, Westford Eagle, that, you know, they, so you sort of, you as the candidate, I was very busy running around, doing all this stuff, while I had tremendous support with people who were raising money, putting up signs and so forth. So, it was, it wasn't, I didn't find it very difficult to find. People are just so willing to do it. I mean, it was amazing how people hold signs for you in the rain and put signs up. And, yeah, no, it was, it was a smooth process.
Yeah. You know, I pulled the papers, and I started collecting signatures. And I had no idea what I was doing. I had to learn all about campaign finance, and I had to get a treasurer, and then who's going to be your campaign chair. I didn't know anybody. But there was someone from church that is part of the Republican Town Committee, Dennis Galvin, who kind of came over one night, pulled out the calendar, and showed me, this is election day. So, here are all your key dates that you have to hit. And I just followed his instructions. And one of the things he really had me doing was going door-to-door, talking to people. And that was an incredible experience. People would invite you to sit on their couch and just chat with them, sit at the kitchen table, and they'd tell you what they had done for the town in the past. And it was exhilarating, you know, not being, not growing up in this town to find out so much. And people were very open, and they'd give you their opinion. It was great. I was standing outside the old Market Basket one day, and it was snowing.
Where Whole Foods is now, right?
And somebody said, "I'm voting for you just because you're out here."
That was good. You did a lot of door-to-door.
Yeah.
I didn't do any.
I covered every street in town.
Yeah, it was amazing.
Including Route 40. No, I couldn't do it today. There's just too many streets.
Well, I remember some, you know, like someone in my camp saying, you know, "One of your opponents is doing door-to-door." I said, "Yeah, well, I don't, you know, I've got young kids. I've got a full-time job. I will not be doing door-to-door." But you did it, and you won.
Yeah.
It was great.
Did you guys know each other prior to running?
No. I don't think we had ever met.
No. I knew Deanie just because I was an observer on the Board. So, I kind of had an idea of her personality and how she went about problem-solving. I wasn't real, you didn't scare me. You should have, but you didn't.
Yeah. No, and we, I was, I think I told you this when you interviewed me. I was Chair that year. And I just said to Valerie, I called her up and said, "Hey, you wanna meet?" So, I can, you know, "I know that you have not done this before." And I have. And I mean, I campaigned at the dump. You know, that was where I first campaigned. And so, we went to, Kimball's had just opened up or was close to having just opened up. And we went and met, and I brought a piece of paper and all the points that I wanted to let her know. And the rest is history. I think we worked really well together.
Extremely well. And it's nice to have a mentor, so to speak. We're politically different. We're just completely opposite. But, you know, you recognize that you have the same goal, and you both had the intention of helping the town.
Town of Westford, right.
So, you could come to a compromise very quickly. You know, you went a little bit, I went a little bit. And the problem gets solved.
Yeah. And we did a lot of give and take, you know. And we, you know, no matter what people say, the honest part of it all is that you do a lot of backroom, like, you know, discussions about things. And you and I would, you know, I'd call you up, or you'd call me up, or we'd meet, and we'd have discussions about, you know, whether we differed, you know, or not. We could usually get to yes. And that was like the best part about, I think, us working together.
You, I learned that you did not like surprises.
No, never liked surprises.
If I had a project that I was working on, you always wanted me to fill you in because you didn't want a Selectman on the Board to come out on camera and just surprise everyone. You kind of wanted to know what we were.
Flamethrowing, I used to call it.
Yeah, and we didn't do that, so.
Yeah, which was really good. And the other part about didn't like surprises is I used to say, I like to know when I'm, if, especially when I was Chair, the first year when you and I won, when we were, I was Chair. I like to know when a vote is put forward after, because everybody speaks first, and then like the, sort of the Chair then wraps it up and calls for the vote. I liked to know what the vote was gonna be. I didn't want any surprises. And sometimes it happened. I mean, you know, there's just, there's some, there's some issues that.
New information comes out.
With new information, yeah.
So, the other thing is, I don't know if it was the first time you were Chair, must have been the second time, because I was Vice Chair. And we had the Chairman's meeting, the Joint Chairs.
Joint Chairs, yeah.
With the School Committee Chair and Vice Chair, Town Manager, School Superintendent, and you and I were together. And we met with the School Committee. We're always hammering out the budget. And it was really tough.
Was that Sharon Boonster the Chair?
No, Betsy, Betsy Andrews.
Yeah, Betsy Andrews, okay, right.
Yeah. We dismissed the Town Manager and the Superintendent. And then, I can't remember who was Vice Chair at the time. But Betsy said that she, the entire School Committee was a little upset because at the School Department or the Superintendent's budget presentation, the Superintendent flat-out said, "It's cheaper to pay the fine than to provide special ed services."
That really upset us.
Well, a lot of decisions were made that Superintendent was dismissed. And I remember you coaching Betsy through all of that.
Why we did it. And, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, both you, both of us, our philosophy was, as you say, we're, you know, we have different politics. But our philosophy was that we want to do the best we can for everyone in the town. So, by dismissing, you know, disabled people or kids that were on IEPs, that did not bode well with me, and it didn't bode well with you. And so, we fixed that.
There were some drastic budget cuts. You know, maybe we'd had spending freezes, hiring freezes. We had no capital budget for years. And we put all of it in toward the School Department so that they could build a special ed.
Department, yeah.
And it was, I hate to say this, but I don't think anybody recognizes the role that you and Betsy played in building that School Department.
Well, you know, the way I look at it was, is we were all a team. We all like, you know, we all had, like, when you say that the name of this program is Women Who Changed Westford, there are so many women who changed Westford. There were, you know, there was Sharon Boonster. There was Betsy Andrews. Susan Flint, you know, she was Chair for, you know, on the School Committee. You know, Nancy Cook, Nancy Oakes. Mickey Crocker, my mother. I mean, you could just go on and on and on of all the things people did. You would just be at a meeting, and someone would say, "Okay, it's time for us to figure out, you know, what we're gonna do about this." And next thing you know, you've got 10 volunteers. And I do have to say, a lot of them were women. And we all worked, and we all had kids, but we all found time.
I know you mentioned that you two had like differing politics in the beginning, but kind of came together in the end. Can you kind of explain what your differences were and some of the issues that kind of brought you together?
I'm a conservative.
And I'm not conservative a lot. And I'm not quiet, and I'm not, you know, any of those things. But we, that was the beauty of being on the Board. You know, I was on the Board with Jack Robel, who mentored me. He was a Republican. Hal Schreiber, conservative Republican. Valerie, conservative. Bob Jeffries, more to the left than I was. I mean, so, you know, Chris Romeo, I never knew where he was gonna be. But, you know, there were, we had, we had a lot of fun times, but we also had a lot of serious times. And we, you had to learn to give and take. And that's, that was one of the things that I learned right away because I was on the, one of my first assignments as a member of my first year on the Board was the police. They were building the police station. So, I went to this meeting, and it was almost all men. And I was looking at this fire thing, and I'm saying, what? Like, you know, because I had done real estate appraising for a while. And I was like, what are we doing? Building this huge thing? And Jack Robel was there, and he said, you have, afterwards, he said, "You gotta learn to tone it down, that you have to, there has to be give and take, and you gotta let people tell you why they want it, and then sometimes you're not gonna get your way." And that was like, mm, I'm not gonna get my way?
No matter how politically different we are, we always seem to find something in common. And there were a few Board of Selectmen meetings when we were watching the Red Sox score more than paying attention to the meeting. So, I mean, simple things like that can bring you together.
Yeah. I mean, there were things that we did that were, that I cannot say on air. But there were, there were things that certain members did, or whatever, or said, or emails, you know, now everything's FOIA'd. But, I mean, I just look back, and I thank God, I thank God. Like, you know, we had this one person that wanted to buy the cannon and the balls that were on the, you know, Westford Common. And we, and what ensued via emails, you know. And then Steve Ledoux, who was this introverted, brilliant Town Manager that we had, he would be like, you know, if someone FOIA's this, and I mean, here I am in the management training business. I wrote, you know, Your Words Matter, you know, sexual harassment, whatever. He goes, "If someone, you know, you yourself wrote a video that said, you know, just remember, everything can be above the fold in the New York Times." And he's like, "You don't want this, so stop." And he goes, "And take me off it." But, so we did, we did have a lot, I mean, we had a lot of fun.
Most of the time.
Yeah, most of the time. I mean, there were some serious times, but, yeah, we did have a lot of fun.
I know you mentioned when we talked previously that you two kind of have like different skill sets, but you kind of like came together.
Yeah, I mean, mine is like blah. You know, I just like tell it, I think what it is, and Valerie is the queen of research.
Yes.
She would say, "Well, so what are your, what are your concerns?" To me, and I'd say, you know, "Oh, we gotta do this, and we gotta do that, we gotta do this." And I'd, you know, blat it out. And Valerie would write it carefully down. And then, a week later, she'd send me an email and say, "Here's what I've, you know, discovered about this." And like, wasn't there, what was at the Abbott School at the bottom? Was there oil spill or?
Oh, the oil.
The oil.
It actually went down an intermittent stream into.
So, I just wanted that resolved. And she was like, "It's not going to just get resolved overnight." And you, like, you did a yeoman's job on researching that.
That's, yeah. Where Deanie would just go ahead and tell you what she felt we needed to do. I would go and say.
She was the doer.
Well, it's not just the doer. It's the, you know, "Well, before we just do this, we must do A, B, C." And, "Oh, by the way, in order to do B, well, that's not really permitted by law, so we're gonna have to find a way around that one."
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I just, it was invaluable. We really worked well together. And I think the town benefited from us working well together.
So, yeah, while we were researching, we actually did read about the Abbott, like fuel release or oil spill. Can you tell us a little bit about like how you handled that?
Well, you're looking at the person who helped us handle that.
Really, the town stepped in first. It was the Highway Department that got out there and, you know, stopped.
The leak.
Yeah, right away. And then, the next thing is that we had to replace that whole oil tank, well, clean everything up and replace that oil tank. And that was a significant cost to the town.
That was when I said, "Well, can't we just get like kitty litter or something?" And you were like, eyes like this big, "No." That's how I would think. Like, get a giant bag of kitty litter.
Yeah, so then, we had to go about finding the money. And then, we did find a source. And then, we involved our State Representative Jeff Hall at the time, who filed the paperwork to submit a request in the state budget because that's where the funds were, within the state. And then, what was it? He filed it for us.
He filed it.
And then, the, that was the representatives. Then the Senators voted it down. The House overrode it. And it finally went through.
The state budget.
Yeah, into the state budget. But in order to get the, you know, I lobbied. I actually was physically there in the State House, lobbying everybody to get that vote. And then, after we finally got it overridden, the Governor vetoed.
Yeah, that was not, not good.
And then, so I went back to the State House and went back to the Senators, who had voted it down the first time, and told them, you know, "You've got this pile of money. It is specifically designated to clean up oil spills. There is no better use for that fund than to clean up a school."
That had an oil spill.
And we actually, they were able to override the Governor's veto.
Yeah, they had more votes, enough votes.
Got up to $5 million. It still costs a little more than that, but we got it done.
Yeah. I mean, Valerie got it done. We supported you, but you took that ball and, you know, got a home run with it. It was amazing. And there were so many things like that that we did in the town that no one even knows. Or like, you know, like when they, the APR came through, you know, when they were having this issue about talking about, you know, building this restaurant and this, you know, venue for a wedding. I was like, wait a minute, you know, back in the day. And I think that, having a lot of history, you know, and having, like Bob Jeffries was, had a lot of history. He had been on the Planning Board. And I knew a lot about what was going on, and, you know, and I knew a lot of people because I grew up in the town. And, you know, the town was so small when I grew up. And then, you know, all of a sudden, all these people. So, you have to, like, you have to constantly let people know, like, wait a minute, you know, this is how, you know, we have to like do this methodically, but it has to get done. And the oil is a perfect example of, of like nobody even, I don't think, there's probably five people who remember it.
That's okay.
Yeah.
It's done.
Yeah, it's done. And it was funded by the state and most of it. And, yeah, it was amazing.
I know you two also worked on growing affordable housing here in Westford.
Yeah, well, I was, Bob Jeffries, that was his baby, was affordable housing. And my philosophy was the same as his, to try and sprinkle affordable housing around. Were you, were you involved, were you on the Board when Stony Brook came forward? Boucher was the developer? No. Well, he, that was, that was like a crack, it's Stony Brook, you know, right where the water is, and it's now all condos and some affordable units in it.
Oh, the old mill building.
The old mill building, yeah. That was, that's a perfect example of, like, people probably don't know the history about that. But as, we did a tour, and I know Bob Jeffries was with me, and I can't remember who else. And Steve Ledoux was there, and we, you know, it was like a crack haven. I mean, you know, there were needles, there were, you know, drug, there was spray paint all over the place. And this developer wanted to develop it, and we talked to him about, you know, putting in some affordable units. And then, we supported it. And Bob Jeffries and I, oh, my God, we got taken to the woodshed. I don't know, by so many people who were in that neighborhood. And I was like, and we had it at the Parish Hall. You know, we had these meetings, a lot of meetings. And we were trying, Bob Jeffries and I were up the front, and we were trying to convince people, "Would you rather have like a crack haven with, you know, people doing drugs?" Or, you know, so you have affordable, and people are paranoid about, you know, affordable, "Oh, it's just gonna be terrible." And I think it has worked out swimmingly. They took it, developed it, and there's affordable units in it, and it's a lovely place to go.
The same thing with the Abbott Mills.
Abbott Mills, yeah.
Have you been in there?
Yes, yeah, same thing, yeah.
That developer met with the residents in Forge Village, and.
Bobby Cornell led the charge.
They really, he worked with them so much. I think they all get free health, fitness center.
Yeah, they get to go to the fitness center, yeah.
But they say it's no different than when the mill was in operation. You know, the company, there's not as much coming and goings as you think. Certainly quieter than the mill. And I think all in all, it was a big improvement for the Village.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's a lot of that kind of stuff that we all did. And the town benefited from it. And I honestly don't even remember, like, probably 75% of all the things that we did. I mean, you know, there were dogs that, you know, we had to, you know, there were dogs that were biting people and whatever. So, you'd have that one time, then you'd be doing a common vicuulous license and, you know.
And there were also, there were families in trouble, and that was really sad to deal with. No specifics, but, you know, people get in trouble. And the law isn't always on their side. And we would have to make a decision. And we'd always try and work it out, but not every time.
Not every time, and it was tough. And then, yeah, that was, you know, a difficult time. And then, one of the things that we also, you, I think you were on the Board when the Hyam Sisters offered the, yeah.
No, I joined right after.
Right after, yeah.
So, Nancy Rosinsky was part of the group that negotiated the purchase.
Yeah, with Steve Ledoux.
Yes.
And so, we were able to convince the town. I think it was a unanimous vote at Town Meeting. And, you know, there's that big chunk of land, it's like 300 acres or plus, that's, you know, that's, we, the town paid for it, and the town gets to use it, so. But there's, there's so many things that. And again, as I said, there's so many women and men. But, you know, since this is, you know, focused on, you know, Women Who Changed Westford. I mean, I just look back at all the women that I worked with, from, you know, Emily Tuller to Marilyn Frank to my sister Tootie, who's still, I think she's still on the CPC, she chaired that for years. You know, Sharon Boonstra, Susan Flint, Betsy Andrews, you, Madonna. I, I worked with, for two years with Madonna. I mean, Madonna was great. She helped me, you know, she was a very calming force. Yeah, I think she was from the Midwest and she, I think, grew up in a farm. I can't, I can't really remember exactly all the details, but she was just, she was great to work with as well. And, and it was, it was really a good, you know, Angela Harkness, Andrea Perena Sweet, I mean, it just goes on and on, all the people that you worked with. And the other person, people that I want to give credit to is the town hall. I mean, the staff at the town hall. You would, I would walk in and say, they'd be always friendly and, but, you know, a little guarded because, oh, you know, here's another member of the Board of Selectmen or whatever. And you, you know, my dad always, and my mom always said, you know, from the, always say hello, always respect everybody, no matter what the color of their skin is, no matter whether they're a janitor or whether, you know, they're a big wig. You know, you, you treat everybody, you know, with respect and, and you be kind. And, and I think that's, that also was very endemic of so many people that I worked with. And I'm sure you feel the same way.
You asked a question during the interview, did we ever have a hard time as a woman? And absolutely, positively, beyond the shadow of a doubt, with any town staff member, no.
Right, they were amazing.
They were really good. They always helped you out.
Went above and beyond. And they, and I, I, I have not been in the town hall for a couple of years, but, you know, I would imagine it's very similar.
Yeah.
And Norman, Norman and, and Steve Ledoux, Steve Ledoux was the town manager, and Norman was the assistant town manager, or he was on the planning side of it. And they were, they were terrific to work with too. You'd, you know, bomb in there at seven or 7:15 in the morning, and they'd be there working, and I'd say, you know, I got some questions, and they'd put whatever they were doing down and, and answer them and find out the information. It was great.
And did you face any challenges on the select board as a woman?
Did I face any challenges? Well, I think the, the social media was starting to take hold, and for some reason, I don't know why, well, I sort of know why, but I, I was not picked on in the, in the social media. I don't think you were picked on either.
I wouldn't pay attention to it.
Anyway, right. But other people on the board would get picked on, and I'd be like, well, I don't know. I mean, as a board member, I used to just tell it like it was, you know, and, and I'm sure that there were, there were some people that it probably aggravated, but I didn't really care. I wanted people to know where I stood. And, and I used to say to people all the time, if they'd call me or email me, convince me that I'm wrong. Convince me, your job right now, don't, I don't want to hear all this other crazy stuff. Just tell me factually how this is going to work out the way you want it to work out, as opposed to the way I want it to work out. Because I want every, I want every person to benefit, or the largesse of the people in Westford. And, and, you know, I, I think my, I, I ran into a few situations where there were some pejorative things said, but other than that, I, it was like water off a duck's back. I don't really care. I didn't care.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we had the social media pressure that-
That's today.
They do now.
Right.
It's gotta be awful.
Yeah, yeah.
And so both of you served pretty, pretty long terms. So what was like, the, like, how did Westford change during all of those years?
Well, first of all, growth. It was incredible growth. And, and I, our meetings got longer, more frequent. We, we, we had, we had to put out more fires than, than we had normally done. Westford used to be a much more sleepy, you know, it was a sleepy town back then, when I grew up. And, and all, you know, and then it became, you know, very expanded, over 20,000 people, and I think there's 24,000 now or 26. And it was, so you had to pick and choose, and you, there were always battles over the budget. And I can remember when I was chair of the board, I had, we had, I had a roundtable meeting with a lot of the people and, and asked everybody from the town to, not everybody, everybody that were on, that was on committees, to come forward, you know, the fire department, the thing. And I just said, I want everybody to close their eyes and pretend like you don't know what is going on but that we're one, one business, and that everybody gets a piece of the pie. Some get bigger slices than others, but we have to work this out. And that was when we were really, you know, running into a deficit and, and, and you knew that, that Prop 2 and 1/2 was not going to pass, because everywhere I went, people were saying it's not, and people who normally would say they would, we're not voting for it. So, you know, I think that those were difficult times, there were always difficulties, and there's still, I'm sure there still is, difficulty with financing. And you had to try and, and work it out, work it through with people.
So, as I watched the Board of Selectmen, I mean, sometimes they're addressing the same problem over and over.
That we did.
It's always that, you know, balancing the, the budget and making everybody-
So hard.
Things work. And, you know, sometimes a department would feel that another department got more, but it's just because as growth happened, the needs changed, you know, and so trying to get everybody happy-
Yeah, it was hard.
It was very hard.
And, and the job of the town manager is that you have to balance a budget. You have to put forward a balanced budget or pass, you know, Prop 2 and 1/2. And if Prop 2 and 1/2 wasn't going to be passed, it was really up to the town manager. And Steve Ledoux, I mean, I can't tell you how much baloney and crap he probably took behind the scenes from department heads and assistant department heads. And he always weathered the storm. And it was, it was tricky, and it still is tricky. It, it's, you know, it's just, there's just bigger problems in Westford now because it's a bigger town and it's more populated. The town, the, when it was a small town of like 4,000, 5,000 people, the, I mean, they, they still, you know, it was a smaller amount of people paying taxes, but it, and it was, you know, tricky, but it got, it's gotten much trickier now.
Big changes I see, I don't drive through Westford anymore. I tend to go the other way. Not on purpose, yes, on purpose. The number of traffic lights and the sidewalks, we've gone from a very rural-looking community to definitely a suburban look.
Like I said, when I would go to Kimball's Farm for ice cream, because they used to have just a little dinky stand. And one of the roads I took was dirt. I'd ride my bike on a dirt road with my brothers and sisters. Yeah, I mean, and that, it's like a thorough way now, so, you know, it's crazy. Things have changed.
We saw in the annual town reports that there was, the East Boston camps were, there was some land preservation going on with that. I was wondering if you guys were involved in that?
Well, I was involved in the, the name change. I was, we had two, two opposing groups. People that actually supported me for Board of Selectmen, they were ready to kill me to, no, I'm only kidding. But they were not happy with me because I wanted it changed to Stony Brook Conservation. And, and, and it, and it won. And Anita Tinkler, was that Tickler, whatever her name, she, she was, she was of Indian descent, and she wanted Wabanaki or something, I don't know, I forget what she wanted. But anyway, it ended up being Stony Brook Conservation. And I was on that committee, and I was on the master plan committee for the East Boston camps as well. I mean, there were so many committees I was on, I can't even remember, like, you know, half of them. And I think that's like another thing. I mean, like, my husband, I don't know how I could have done this job without my husband because he took the kids to practices and a lot of games, and he was home doing homework with them and, you know, feeding them dinner and whatever. But it, it usurped a lot of your time. If, if you wanted to do a really good job, I mean, there were some people that did a good, really good job, and there were some people that did just an okay job, and that's fine. They gave all that they could give, and some others gave more. But I think both you and I gave a lot. We were on a lot of subcommittees and, and we were passionate about it.
Going back to East Boston camps, I told you that Nancy Rosinsky kind of spearheaded-
The purchase of it, yeah, from the Hyams.
One of the agreements they made for that purchase was to let the East Boston camps continue. I think that's kind of prompted us to change town council because they did not give good counsel to our, the negotiators because technically they couldn't allow another nonprofit use the property.
Which, which would have been East Boston.
Yeah, it was against the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it was very, very tense because we wanted the property, we had the funds to purchase it, but this little issue of letting the East Boston camps continue really bothered many people in town.
Yeah, we, we heard from a lot of people. They were like, why are we spending all this money and we're not going to get access to it? Plus, I also had a, my accountant in my office, my, in my job, they, there was, she was a forensic accountant prior to her coming to work for us. And I had her look at the books, and she was like, oh, there's, you know, some stuff that's not, not kosher in here. And so there was that, you know, I didn't like blast that out to anybody, but, and Valerie, you know, you didn't blast out, you know, any of that. We, we tried not to, we tried to keep it low-key and not, not, we didn't, we weren't trying to not be transparent, but we were just trying to get people to get, to get along and, and, and we wanted this parcel of property, so we worked behind the scenes.
That we wanted to get through that before we handed off to the Conservation Commission.
Commission, right.
Because we didn't think that the Conservation Commission deserved the headache. They could probably have weathered it, but-
They had enough headaches.
Yeah. So, I mean-
But we worked it through.
Yeah.
And, and it's, it's ours, and the town gets to use it, and it's great. It's a nice piece of property. I've, I've been there lots of times.
Just a little fun question, I guess, just out of curiosity. You've, you've obviously had so much experience on the board. Were there any moments where your perspective might have changed on a particular issue or?
I can't think of exactly, but I know I changed, I know that I would say to somebody, and a lot of people called me, and a lot of people emailed me, and I always called them back, and I used to say, convince me otherwise. And I know there were a few issues that I was convinced otherwise, but to, to be honest, I can't remember what they were.
Yeah. I can't think of anything in particular.
I can't either.
Yeah.
That's okay. No worries.
True.
But people did change our minds.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, you gotta remember that you represented-
People. Everybody.
Everybody. And if one person was, you know, being very, very loud and wanting things their way, you had to keep in mind that you're serving maybe 1,000 more. And so you can't satisfy the one person. And I still get digs from that one person.
Oh, you do?
Oh, yeah.
I don't-
You know what?
We all got digs from Tony Martinez, but he passed away, but-
Yeah, you know, too bad.
Yeah.
How do you, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
How did you deal with like criticisms from other people or like?
Well, I, I'd be lying if I said, you know, when someone criticizes you or, or, you know, trashes you or whatever you want to say, I'd be lying if I said it didn't bother me. But it, it did bother me sometimes, but I would always look at the end game. That was the way I looked at it. Am I doing the best for, for, for the large group of residents? And, and that's, that's kind of what got me through any of those harder times when people would criticize you. Because of course, you're going to get criticized. I mean, you know, my style is, my style of leadership is, is very different than a lot of women and, and a lot of men. And, you know, when, because I'm such a forward, direct person, it's, it's, it was difficult for some people to deal with me. And, and I would just be like, and they, and, and, you know, there, they, there was even a shot that was taken of me in the, in the, in the town, one of, after I left, when I left the board, and it was like, you know, we have a kinder, a gentler person that took Dini's place. Well, you know, that person was a gentler person. But what, I mean, that's what makes the world go around, different personalities. And I was never going to change, and I, I think it was like, you know.
You have to have very thick skin to be out in public with an opinion, whether it's your own opinion or you're representing somebody else.
Right.
It just, you gotta, it's like, it's playing a team sport, you lose sometimes.
Yeah.
No big deal. You just get up and play again.
Right. That's exactly right. That's, that's a good way, that's a good analogy.
So going off of that, what would your advice be for someone who's maybe interested in politics, but maybe is having a hard time like sharing their opinions or something like that?
I say, do it. You know, if you are a woman and you want to run for something, go for it. And, and you'll learn a lot, you'll, it'll, it'll humble you, it'll embolden you, it'll do all those adjectives, but do it. Because if women don't do it, then it's never going to get done. And, and, and I don't mean to say that, but, you know, to be negative, that men won't get it done, but I, I do believe that this town is loaded with incredibly bright, talented women, and they just should get out there and do it. And I think Emily Tullard is doing, she's got a group that she's, you know, helping them sort of, you know, season them to, to do, you know, different various committees and jobs and, you know, Board of Selectmen and School Committee, and, and, and there, the town will benefit from that.
Nothing, I, nothing to add to that. I mean, it's not just women, it's men too.
Right. Just do it.
I mean, yeah. It's, there's enough men out there that they think that they can't have a full-time job and a family and still volunteer for the town. It's just, there's no barrier. It's only town government. It's, you know, it's the first step, and you might take it, and it might lead somewhere else or, you know.
Or you might just do one term and say, okay, I'm done. You know, my kids are, are, are being harmed by this, or my job, or my business, or whatever. But, I mean, I, I, to be like as blunt as possible, is it a lot of work? It is a lot of work. It is, you, you do really need to like it. I mean, you, you really need to like being, you know, in situations where you have to, you know, figure out, like, what are you going to do to make this happen? Like, you know, like you said, we, we figured out how to get the town to really love East Boston camps, which is now Stony Brook Conservation. But, you, you know, you have to kind of figure out a way to do it. And, and, and one thing that, you know, I, I had no idea when I first started, I had no idea how much time you would put, how I would put, and you do, you too. We were like, we both put a lot of time into, you know, being on the Board of Selectmen. And, you know, I, I personally, I, I look at Westford and I say, okay, you've got 110 and you've got Route 40, and, you know, there's, the Westford Center's still the same, and it, it just, it, it warms, warms my heart that Westford, even though it's grown so much and it's, it's developed, you know, way beyond when I grew up here, it's still a wonderful town to live in. It's, the education is good, people spend money to, to support the different committees, and it's a great place to raise kids. And, you know, I, I, I look at it, it, it's all, it all paid off.
There, there, in my first term, there was an occasion when I actually missed one of my daughter's concerts. And then after that, never again. It's, you know, this is a volunteer job.
Right.
Family is important, comes first, so I showed up late to a meeting. It's not a big deal.
Big deal, I know. In the beginning, you're like, oh.
Yeah.
But, you know, then you-
You get over it.
Yeah, you get over it, yeah. I did miss a lot of my kids' games and stuff, but, you know, you see, I mean, how many games can you see, so?
And before we wrap things up, is there anything that you would like to add?
I, I think the most, the most important is the contribution that you can make if you get on these committees or if you run. you get on these committees, or if you run. Even if you lose first time, try, try, try again. And I, I think personally, you will, you'll just feel so good when, when things work out. You'll feel terrible when things don't work out, but most of the time, they work out. I mean, really, that's what I'm talking about, like, when we were on the board, there were, you know, independents, Democrats, Republicans, conservatives, you know, super liberals, and you, we still found a way to, you know, always get like at least a 3-2 vote, and most of the time, a unanimous vote. And that, you know, I, I think that in itself teaches everyone, will teach you, as a person that gets on it, when I say, just go ahead and do it, you'll, you'll, it's a, it's a wonderful lesson to learn, to, to deal with different fact, you know, different groups of people that have differing thoughts, because then it makes you more aware of, you know, that, okay, this person thinks this way, but I think this way, so, you know, how, how are we going to, you know, work this out?
It definitely broadens your perspective.
Definitely.
I mean, at the, the end of my third term, I was on committee with Bob Jeffries. And if you and I are different, he and I are very different.
Yeah, well, he, Bob Jeffries, he used to be my, my flamethrower.
Oh, okay. But, but at the very end, you know, we would look at one another during a meeting when somebody said something, it's like, uh-oh, we both recognize, that's not a good thing. You know, and we've served on a committee together, and we were able to get everybody to work together, and I just grew in respect for him.
Yeah. Very intelligent man.
And I mean, it's, it emboldens, it emboldens you to be able to work with anyone...
Yeah.
And come to the right conclusion.
Right. And, I mean, like, he, and Jeffries, and Bob Jeffries, I mean, they're two people that have dedicated so much time and effort, you know, she, both of them on different committees, then he got on the, he was on the planning board for years, the select board, I mean, it, it's just, they're, you know, you, I would never, like, Bob Jeffries would not have traveled in my social circle, so, but I did get to know, and, and I'm still friends with him. I mean, it's, it's just that kind of thing.
It's the, the campaign itself, you build relationships, so when you have a problem, you have an expert to turn to, you know, it might not be an expert, but, you know, there's someone to bounce an idea off of, or to say, well, we did this, it didn't work, and it's just wrong respect for everybody.
I can remember going into, you know, Steve Ledoux's office, and he'd say, tell me, it's like this person and this person. I'm like, oh, blah, 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 but he goes, he goes, you just, he's like, you should write a book, you just know so much. And I said, if you think I know so much, I mean, talk to Mickey Crocker, talk to my mother, talk to Nancy Cook. I mean, there's just so many people that know so much. I mean, I got, my mother was on the Council of Aging, and then Nancy Cook, my mother died, and Nancy Cook said, why don't you come and do the Council of Aging? And I did it, but it, it really did take a lot of time, because I met in the afternoon, it took a lot of time away from my job, so I couldn't do it for that long, but, you know, there wasn't a person she didn't know, who, when they'd come through the door or whatever. And, and, and I think that's, you know, and she was much more conservative than I was, but, you know, that doesn't mean we're not friends, you know, and, and, and I think that's the beauty of being on these committees and being on these boards, is that you learn different perspectives. You learn that everybody has their own perspective, and you learn to respect and work together with that person.
Yeah. That's amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Warmel and Mrs. Healy Coffin, for being here today and talking about your experiences with Westford and your time on the select board. On behalf of us all, thank you to our listeners for joining us today for the Westford Museum and Historical Society's Women Who Changed Westford podcast as well. We would also like to thank the Westford Cultural Council for sponsoring this project. Have a nice day.
Great. Thank you.